Call the regular council meeting at City Hall, City of St. John, July 3rd, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Okay, let's jump into additions to the agenda. New business, West Street and Fifth Street. Motion in a second. Christie, Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries 3-0. Citizens comments? Don't believe so. Just for the people at home, Mark.
Yeah.
Okay, consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, June 19th, 2018. Appropriation ordinance 070318 in the amount of $68,742.83 in petty cash, $395. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Sanders and Bryant, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries 3-0. Department head and committee reports. Grand administrator Lisa Cornwell?
Hi, um, yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna be, I'm gonna be meeting with Lisa Thursday at 10:00. She said she doesn't have a report for this evening, but she did say that she wrote the Bark for Your Park grant, and there are several other grants available for dog parks that she's gonna send the same application to. But she did say that the Bark for Your Park hasn't given a grant to a city smaller than 25,000 to 30,000 historically. So she wants to send it to foundations that actually support smaller towns. And then, um, no good news on street grant for Fifth Street.
No news or no good news?
No good news.
No good news?
Yeah.
I talked to her today. She told me in lines there was no money for the asphalt on Fifth Street. She said not that she found so far.
Anything else?
Not from Lisa.
Counsel, I want to direct Jamie to ask Lisa anything.
Okay.
Oh, I guess I can ask you guys, 'cause you were around. I was gonna talk to Jeff as well. She did ask, um, for 16 and 17, the Golden Belt Community Foundation grant for benches. The walking program was completed, but were the benches purchased? Do you guys know anything about benches and the walking?
They weren't purchased.
They weren't? Okay.
They were replaced. Some of the stuff up in the park is what they were for.
Okay. Okay. That gives me my answer for what I mean with her.
Let me go on.
Chief Adam Sandler. Say my report. As a request to the activity report, been put on our Facebook page, City Office. I did put a word on the Facebook page that we would have a hard copy in here at the city office if anybody would come, come and look at it. I don't have that yet, but I'll have it out here by tomorrow. So that's...
Thursday?
Well, I'm, I'm working tomorrow, so it'll be, it'll be in there tomorrow.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that. I appreciate it, Chief. Looks good.
Thank you very much for that.
And then the, what I have for the purchase over the spending limit, I wanted to, to see if we could revisit the prisoner partitions that we discussed previously. The main reason is, within the past month, month and a half, we've had two separate individuals that we've had to deal with that were just knuckleheads out of control. We are seeing, it's not just us, thank goodness, we're not seeing as many as other places, but our contacts were coming, are of an altered mental status due to the opioid stuff, prescription drugs, all that kind of stuff is escalating, and it's not gonna get any better. So, I contacted the guy that gave me the estimate the first time, and asked him if that quote was still good. He said it was, but then he also changed the quote because he has a used cage that was in good condition. It was about a little less than half, or a little over half of what the previous one was. So the new... And like I said, this is, this is the, pretty much the exact same quote that we received the first time around. But the one in the car would be a good condition used cage, that the price includes all the equipment as well as the installation, and that would be them coming here to install it. So we're not gonna be out of time having to go back and forth and hand over to get them installed and that kind of thing. So it's not gonna, won't be any scheduling issues, anything like that. They come right down here, boom.
What's the need?
The, the need, you missed it, I think, when you came in. We've had a couple individuals recently that we had to arrest that were out of control and necessitated having a cage in our patrol vehicles for safety reasons, not only for us, for them. One of them, that they transported without the sheriff's officer who didn't have a cage in his car, attempted to open the door while going highway speed and get out of the vehicle.
And you shut the door?
I wasn't there. But, no, yes, there, it was a, we're gonna reach around real quick and shut the door. Unfortunately, the thing about it is, as much as we like or don't like it, as soon as we arrest them, they become our responsibility. And we have to take every measure we can to make sure that they arrive at their destination safely and in as good a health, if not better, than what we got.
So what did it cost to use a sheriff's car?
It didn't cost anything except for the fact it was not a good situation or a safe situation for us to have to arrest them, put them in our car, transport them to the sheriff's office, get them out of our car, process them through the sheriff's office, and back in another car. Both of these cases necessitated being able to stick this person in a car, restrain them, and get them to a secure facility. I mean, this, this, this is by no means a want or desire to just spend some money. It's, it's becoming a necessity. As I told them, the individuals we're contacting with mental illness, prescription opioid-induced stuff going on up in their heads that we've never seen before, we're encountering. And it's only becoming more prevalent.
What's counsel think about maybe both or just maybe one of the vehicles and having, I mean, I know you'd still have to put them in whatever vehicle you're in and then put them in the other vehicle, ours, to get them to wherever, but at least you would have a cage in one vehicle or both. What's counsel think?
I think it's a perfect opportunity for city and county to work together and have one cage vehicle.
I, I, I would agree with that, but I don't think, from over there, they're open to it. There's a negative, I think there's a, a sort of a negative attitude between that. I, I just don't, I hate to put words out there that I'm not 100% on, but I, I feel that from things I hear, from people there, people here, in a sense, that's my personal opinion. But I, if we could work together, we could work together.
With, with the past transport, there was no issues. The other sheriff offered to go get the vehicle. The vehicle was at another deputy's house. He had to take his vehicle over there, get it, put gasoline in it, and bring it back. You know, but the original agreement, when they agreed to help us out, they had a transport vehicle that was permanently at the sheriff's office. They hired a fifth deputy to go out, and that's not the case.
They no longer have a transport vehicle?
Well, they do. They have a new vehicle ordered for the deputy.
Okay. So they will have a transport vehicle?
They will have a transport vehicle.
But my, I guess my, you know, part of, I, I see part of my job as the risk management side of it too. And just one time of of us having to scuffle unnecessarily with somebody we have in cuffs, and they, I mean, as soon as we put the cuffs on, there are responsibilities to whatever medical costs they incur from anything that might happen, the city's on the hook for it.
Well, I had read a story here recently where an inmate shot two officers and killed them because it was coming out of a building into another vehicle, because they'd been put out of a vehicle into the building and then back out. It was all the transitioning. I think they think that anytime we need equipment, we jump to get equipment, and I think this is a very... Safety's a concern for me, and we need to make sure people are safe.
Mr. Mayor, I think your position is to direct the council meeting and not interject opinions?
No, from time to time in my job description, it says that I can offer my opinion. That's... I will, I will stop my comments on this issue. I can respect that.
Chief, do you have enough money in the, in your, um, your account for something this way?
In Capital Outlay, I've got right around, I believe, 21,000, 22,000.
If you had to choose between one, both of these vehicles and only putting one in, which one would you prefer?
I would probably do the truck just for, because it's easier, you know, there's more room in the truck. In the backseat would be easier to give inmates in and out.
I think that the safety of our officers is paramount. I'm not, not real crazy about the price, but...
970 for the Charger, and then another $200 installation fee, is that right? So...
Well, you've got, basically, it's 250 installation per. But then, for an additional 200, they will come here and put them in without us having to travel there. Now, that's gonna be cheaper than the, the gas and overtime. I'm gonna have to pay some, maybe go back and forth twice to have them put in. Right. I mean, that's a pretty good deal as far as...
Which vehicle do you think you're gonna keep longer?
At this one time, it would be, I would probably say the Charger, the truck. You know, we've had issues with it at higher mileage. It's around 65,000. The Charger's just about rated 150, so...
So when, in, in putting this in your vehicle, do you think you'll start transporting them to Rice County or wherever it is?
We have to go.
Or do you think?
We have to go wherever there's room.
So the county won't transport them from St. John to Rice County anymore? You will do that?
If it's a municipal court case, yeah. If it's, if it's a district court case, then the county would still transport. And all of our misdemeanors and, you know, our domestic violence, DUIs, all that kind of stuff, there are misdemeanor charges that we prosecute through municipal court, we would be doing the transport.
But when you initially pick someone up, it's not a court case yet, at that top. Am I correct?
If, well, if we, I mean, if we initially pick somebody up and arrest them, they have the opportunity to bond or they go to jail. So, yeah, I mean, if, if, if we have probable cause to put handcuffs on them, then it's, it hasn't per se been filed with the county or city attorney yet. But they're, if they don't bond out, they're going to jail. So the transport is...
And the sheriff objects to sharing cages, et cetera, working together?
No, no, the sheriff is not objecting in helping us at all. This, this is purely a safety issue and a liability issue way, I see it, of having to get them in and out, in and out of vehicles. The more time you, you have somebody in cuffs, the more agitated they get. It's just, I, I just think it's for the best.
I guess I'm, I'm okay with getting a cage, but, um, what we're gonna step into is you're gonna start transporting, unlike you've been doing right now, and is that, is that okay?
No, it's not gonna change our transports at all.
Right now, you still transport to Rice County or wherever?
Yeah, the one I arrested last week, I transported to Rice County.
Okay. I guess I didn't realize that. I thought the county did all your transports.
No. Historically, they did, because everything was prosecuted through district court.
Okay.
So when it's, when it's a district court case, even though we make the arrests, they automatically become an inmate of the sheriff because it's handled through district court. But like I said, now with our, you know, domestic violence, which is a mandatory arrest, DUI, all those charges that are misdemeanors that are now handled in municipal courts that weren't handled in years past, then we do those transports.
How often do you think, I mean, when do you think the next time you're gonna upgrade vehicles is?
Several months ago, I tried to upgrade the truck. I mean, it, it needs to be, the, the issues with that truck, I would prefer to get it gone as soon as possible. And, you know, a couple of years ago, when we did our strategic plan, that was the idea behind building up the Capital Outlay and replacing our vehicles at a, at a, basically around 50,000 to 60,000 miles because they still had a balance of the factory warranty. When we traded them in, we would get a good trade-in, and we would be, get to the point where we're paying cash for vehicles instead of borrowing money. I mean, that's a roundabout way of answering your question, so I would guess, I would say as soon as possible on the truck. It just depends on how long we wanna limp it along, I guess.
And I would almost say, just, just if you're gonna do it, just do one vehicle. I certainly, if I was a police officer, would not feel comfortable transporting someone all the way to Rice County with someone in the back, you know, that doesn't have a cage. But I, I think for this, this amount of money, it's kind of no brainer. I would almost say... Thoughts from others? I guess which one, you know, which one's gonna be around longest or...
Well, that's my thinking. If, which would be, if you say that the Charger's gonna be around longer, if we're gonna put, if only do one, then we would do the Charger.
I would say so, because you're, you have a money savings there too.
Right, so you're looking at what, $970 for just that one right there?
1100.
1100.
Plus, plus the installation cost.
Okay.
Because you take out your new installation.
So you're looking at 1170. So, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Don't know about the rest of you.
Thoughts? Motion?
I move to allow Chief Saylor to purchase a prisoner transport cage at 1170 for the 2014 Dodge Charger.
Motion on the table? Second. Motion in a second. Bryant and Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Do you have a vote? Carries 3-0.
Like I said, before we move on from that, I just wanna read, there's no, I mean, there's no issues with the sheriff helping or anything like that. I mean, that's, that's been fine. I guess it was more of a safety issue on that, so... That's all I got.
Anything for Chief?
Have any issues on Saturday?
No, Saturday was good. What have you, except for, except for Bill running over firecrackers?
Thank you, Chief.
Anything from the fire chief?
Uh, no.
Anything that needs to be related to the fire chief, anybody?
City clerk, Jane Getty. Still working on the budget. Melissa and I are gonna sit down again on Monday because we're running into some issues that we need to get lined out. So more than likely, I'm gonna request probably a special meeting next week, so we can all sit down and go into it a little bit further in detail, because the next meeting, we're gonna have to... I know I have my days, right? I'm gonna have to get it accepted and published for August. Let me check my numbers here.
You have to have it done by the last meeting that we have this week.
Yeah, we have to have the hearing on the 7th of August, and I have to publish it by the July 19th. So our next meeting, I need it approved, so we can, so I can publish it that Thursday. So more than likely, I'm gonna request a special meeting next week, so, I mean, the numbers aren't working out as smooth as I thought they were going to. And when I was on the phone with Melissa today, she just kept saying, "Oh, boy, oh, boy." And by the end of the conversation, she gave me more things to research and look up, and she basically said that we need to start watching a little bit more. So, take it for what it's worth, in the middle of the process, where, I mean, we're not completely through everything, and I mean, those are just putting in the rough numbers. That's not going and researching everything and what's actually been being spent for 18, but it's just interesting so far, but we'll get there. But she, I think, is out the rest of the week, so Monday is her first day to be able to sit down again after what I went through and researched everything else, this last go-around, so...
If she's looking at possibly a meeting next week, would, um, same schedule like we do, Tuesday at 7:00 next week? Be a potential date? I wanna get the call now before I just set a date, 'cause I want you guys to be able to be there.
Set a date, and I'll be there.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be...
Just trying to accommodate everyone.
Most likely, I'll be here.
I'll be here.
That could be a little bit later. Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I think I actually have a class.
But that would be...
If it worked, then...
Whatever, you just tell me.
Unflexible, if it's later, you know. Just if I'm trying to spend all my time or something, that gets you an idea.
Yeah. You probably already done the appropriation ordinance. I had a question, don't you? At $400 with some expenses for cell phones for the police department, Anna, if I recall? Why?
Why don't we pay for their cell phones?
We have radios.
Is it that also? Are there some other, Jeff, do you guys have anything on that as well? What was I looking at?
The only thing, the only thing with Visa is the police department and we have the, where are they?
The Wi-Fi internet?
Yeah.
Your internet's on that?
I do have one in my pickup, yeah.
Well, and that's just for, like, the communication with the meters and stuff like that, too.
Sure.
For police department, that's what I asked you.
You have a listed police department. Well, I think it's...
All the officers on the police department are provided a phone by the city, because we are on call.
Okay.
And so, because we are on call, we have to be able to get, our dispatcher, the city office, has to be able to get hold of us 20 hours a day.
Okay.
That's fine.
And it's $400 a month for three people?
443.55.
Well, we have, we have four, we have four, we have four cell phones, and we have two Wi-Fi hotspot in each patrol vehicle.
And it's $400 a month? That's...
Want to see a statement on that?
Well, I think I have six or, six phones plus on my cellphone service, and it's $200 a month.
I mean, it might be something, maybe we need to check into it, maybe text it.
Who's the carrier?
Is it Verizon?
No, it's Next. The Next tech is the carrier.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what appropriation you're looking at.
Was the one that was in my packet.
Yeah, that's right, here, it's appropriation. 0703.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Did you say Next?
Maybe there's a cost of phones in there, but, um...
I think my, my bill, there's all, they're all iPhone, six of the plus.
That's for, like, all of everything. That's not just the police department. That's, it says phones and Wi-Fi and police department cell phones.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Electric department Wi-Fi as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, no.
That one?
Yeah, his, part of his is under, because we already have the account open.
Right.
And then the other one is Verizon.
Yeah, part of that Verizon is gatekeepers.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Right.
Yeah, the gatekeepers for the meters.
Okay.
And that's the bill, we were with CenturyLink, and that's the, we were paying like, wasn't it like over a thou, like 900 to $1,000? And we cut it back to the...
Have you looked at Golden Bill?
I think that is Next.
That is through Golden, Golden Belt.
Okay.
Golden Belt telephone, Next, tomorrow.
Yep, that's the one that we cut down.
Golden Bill, Next, tomorrow, okay. You got faster than anyone. It's fiber optic versus DSL.
Anything for Adam? Sorry, excuse me. I thought we jumped back on to Adam, so I wanted to ask if there was anything else regarding that issue. Good. Back to Jamie.
Okay, so the on-call pay, basically for the handbook, John's suggestion, instead of having the on-call pay in the handbook, he wants it like in the minutes, so I'm requesting that we make a motion in these minutes, so I can just attach one, so I don't have to go back and try to find where you guys made motions for the police department on-call and the who-knows-where
Sure.
um, shop guys.
I don't even know what shop guys get.
They get eight...
Forty, forty, and thirty. They get forty for Saturday, forty for Sunday, and thirty for a holiday.
They get $80 a week, and then $30 for a holiday.
For one person, Jim?
Two.
Two.
But one person each.
It's for each one.
So they get $80 a week and $30 for a holiday?
And then if they get called out, they're out.
Call out, yeah.
Time, just take time right.
Yeah.
And how far are they on a leash, Jim?
25 minutes, 25 miles, 30 minutes.
30 minutes, great, Jim.
Yeah, 30 minutes.
And...
I just...
It wasn't ever in the minutes, is what you're saying?
I don't know if the shop guys were ever in the minutes. I know we had discussed the police departments recently, but to make it easier for the handbook, I would like it all in one spot, so I don't have to go try to find when someone talked about the shop guys on-call day, because I have no idea where they would be in.
That way, when you reference the handbook in the attachment, you can look back at the page and see what attachment it is, and look at the minutes.
So I'll just attach the minutes as attachment H or whatever it's gonna be, and it's gonna have it all in there. Instead of, John said to not reference it in the handbook, he wanted it as an attachment.
Right. It just cleans up the handbook, so you have rates and everything else in there.
I'm sitting here, and I don't agree with the rates for the city guys, though. Wanna pay them $30 to be on-call on a holiday?
Yeah, it's different than Saturday and Sunday. It's always been...
Pay them $40 a day on Saturday, Sunday, that ain't right.
We'll make every day a holiday.
Well, I'm just thinking, I mean, why would you pay them less for a holiday, especially if they got family?
But they'll get that in addition, is it an addition to their day?
Yeah.
Well, we all get the same day, I mean, you know.
So they'd be making 70 bucks.
But they're tied to a leash for 45 miles.
Right, right.
For a week.
Well, I mean, if you're...
Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
A lot of times, yeah, a lot of times, see, they're, like, like with Thanksgiving and those, where you have a long weekend, why...
It's $80 for the week, and if a holiday happens to fall in that week, they get an extra $30. It's not birthday.
But they don't, but the downfall to that is, they don't get time and a half, see? They've been cheated out of their time and a half, so if they get called out on that day, it's straight time.
Right.
Because they haven't worked 40 hours, so...
That holiday, yeah, unless it falls from a Saturday or Sunday, which...
Yeah.
But if they get called out on Saturday or Sunday, they get time and a half.
If they've been here all week.
If they've been here before.
Yeah. Yeah. They have to be here for 140 hours for...
I just think if you're, if they have a holiday in there, you ought to pay them a little more for being tied down for that day. I think it ought to be at least 40 across the board on it.
Here's your chance to change it. I just think a motion.
I don't know.
Thoughts?
I don't have a problem with that, but I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, if they're gonna be on-call Christmas, working three hours on Christmas...
Did you say our budget's in trouble this evening?
What just came out of your mouth?
She didn't say it was in trouble. They don't know that yet.
Yeah. I'd say leave it the way it is to defend it where our budget looks like.
We can always change it.
Yeah.
Revisit it.
I think if you give, if you give a benefit, you should take that benefit back down. If you're gonna jump it now, and then you're gonna take it away, once you see where your numbers are, you ought to wait until you see your numbers and then give them the increase.
I'm fine with that. That's okay with me. We'll see where our numbers are, spot.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
We're gonna be looking at it next week.
Well, I think we'll look into it.
Right, right. Forty, forty, and thirty for the holiday?
For all across the board, everybody.
That's for the city workers.
That's what they asked me for quite a while.
That's for city.
For the shop guys.
For shop guys.
We've already set the police department in it. Do you remember?
I do, but I don't want to open my mouth, because it's less than what the other guys get. And they're tied to a leash of city limits.
No, they get more.
Okay, no. For up, for up to 20 hours, they get $40. For up to $40, 40 hours, they get $80, and then it's additional after that, so per pay period, they're, they, they're, they cover 20 hours of on-call per pay period.
But you gotta thank city employees, work at 7:30 to 3:30. But that guy's on-call from 3:30 that day till 7:30 the next morning.
7 o'clock.
And then the following day from 3:30 till 7 o'clock the next day, for a week straight.
I had guys out, I had guys out four times last night.
So they're actually on more on-call time.
I got you.
I mean, so they're getting $80 a week.
Right, I thought theirs was shipped.
No, theirs is, I mean...
District yard.
It's Monday to Monday.
They, they roll their, I think you guys roll your employees' on, on-call time, right?
Yeah.
I mean, everybody rotates out.
Sure.
I mean, you have water and electric guy on-call each week.
But like last night, you know, we had chlorine failure out at the water plant yesterday. I had guys out there every two and a half hours last night. They don't get a time and a half, because tomorrow's a holiday, see?
Right.
So they took it as straight pay. So, I mean, there's a disadvantage to that, too, so...
But they put in, I mean, they're on-call, that one person's on-call for, is it five days or seven days?
Seven, Monday to Monday, yeah. Seven, Monday to Monday, yeah.
So, I mean, they've got, they've got a lot of hours.
They've got a lot of hours, been on-call.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, yours is.
That's what I just understand.
So it's forty dollars for the first twenty hours and then two dollars per hour after that? Is that what you said?
It's forty for the first twenty hours, eighty for the, for forty, and then anything over forty was.
Two bucks an hour.
Two bucks an hour on the police department.
And that's how we have it set.
Me?
That's right.
I should probably know that, huh?
They, they will probably know that.
Pam does know that. Okay, would you like to read the computer for a motion? I have it written out for you. Jim, you're closest.
Maybe I don't want to move that we accept this.
Someone else?
Here, I'll read it.
You can move the top vote for it.
You'll read it? Hey, you, Roy put this in. I move.
Yeah.
That we have the shop. You want that just shop guys or how do you wanna call?
Shop employees.
Shop and city employees on-call pay to be eighty dollars per week and thirty dollars per holiday in the police department. Forty dollars for twenty hours on-call and eighty dollars.
For forty hours.
For forty hours at two dollars per hour bonus after that.
Second. Motion, Adorn Sanders has a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All boos?
Three, three zero.
It's three zeros, Adorn abstains.
Yeah, I abstain.
Motion. Hey, Jimmy.
Okay, so car show. Would you guys entertain the possibility of maybe having a craft beer tasting at our craft show?
Car show.
Yeah, car show.
We're doing a counter.
Yes, looking at a meeting there.
Too much craft beer.
I was going to look into everything that I need and I talked to John and I want your blessing before I go do all the work pretty much. Cause I'm gonna have to get, I'll have to get the license and then I'll have to have the area approved and roped off and all of that.
I'm fine with.
I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
If you're bringing people to town and doing stuff, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
It's a unanimous decision.
Yeah, I don't really think so, I just.
Consensus? Yeah, you just have a consensus.
Alright, I'm good with it.
And we are having the car show on August twenty-fifth from what, eight to three, I think?
She's gonna have a dunk tape there that you guys are gonna sign up for to benefit the Jubilee Fund. Is that what she said?
Oh, that's what I wanted, but I didn't think.
Just keep that in the back of your head, guys.
You don't pay me enough to sit on dunk tape.
All the craft beer you can drink, yeah.
Is that mayor included?
Yes.
City employees as well?
No.
Dunk the chief.
We, I did, that is something that I thought of to try to get donations, but we have contacted um, an organization that I think is gonna help us with like some fun activities to try to raise money for their, for their organization. And I have one more thing from John, the email that I sent that I had forgot to give you with the um.
Sales tax.
Yeah, the sales tax stuff. So basically, he was just gonna share that in smaller communities where shopping may be limited, many people shop online. Online shopping creates two problems. First, consumers in most instances, and there are ex- ex- exceptions if the online retailer has a physical presence in the state, can purchase products without having to pay sales tax on those items. Second, smaller local retailers cannot compete against online competition where customers can save sometimes ten percent by buying online where they don't have to pay sales tax. The United States Supreme Court overturned its previous decision in ninety-two to allow the collection of the state's sales tax on online purchases regardless of whether the retailer has a nexus or physical presence in the state. So he's bringing this to the city's attention because of the sales tax. If the state passes the internet sales tax, it may increase the tax revenue that St. John will collect, but it also has a, could have a negative effect by pa- by, if by passing internet sales tax in the legislature, then exempt sales tax from groceries and medicine. It's the sales tax on the groceries and medicine that is supposed to pay off part of the grocery store. I know that taxes in general are not favored, but many small and local retailers were hoping for this decision in order to level the playing field. I hope the legislature lowers the sales tax across the board now that it will be collected from all transactions. So from what I'm getting out of this, I mean, the grocery store is groceries and medicine, so we would be.
But we, what, what sales tax will it?
Well, and that's because of the tip.
It'll be up to the state as to whether they exempt groceries and medicine from the state's sales tax. And I don't know that if they, that'd be John's decision, but our city option tax probably will be removed by the state too on groceries and medicine.
Right, but.
And since, and that's, that's what keeps, right, sales tax for being as horribly regressive in many states as it is in this one because many states exempt groceries and medicine from sales tax.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Even if they did that, we still aren't collecting the sales tax from the grocery store because the tip is.
For at least ten years.
Yeah, for ten, for ten years, but you know, after that, yeah.
I don't know, would we be able to collect sales tax from a grocery store after that, if we've had them?
Well.
If the state exempted it.
Right, you're right, I mean, after ten years, yeah.
Well, even before.
Well, we won't collect.
We don't collect, we won't collect anything, no.
Yeah.
Maybe up to the legislature what they do.
Yeah. That might put it, if I need.
Might be interesting.
What else, Jamie?
Hmm, I think that's it. We'll just call it that.
One for Jamie, anybody?
Just, just information.
Hold it. Oh, I am going um through different things, like with rates with these budget issues. I am gonna be looking at rates in the previous um like the times that have been increased and different things like that, just just to have the information when we sit down for the budget stuff. Seeing you guys are aware of what the history's been on the rates.
Did you figure how many, find out how many gallons or thousands of gallons of water we use and how many water rate needs to be on gallons to pay for?
In two thousand and seventeen, we sold thirty-five million two hundred and ninety-five thousand.
And we charge by the thousand or?
Yes, by the thousand. Seventeen forty-five for the first three thousand.
Okay.
And then five fifty-eight for every additional thousand.
Okay.
That seventeen forty-five's not only for three thousand gallon, it's also for part of the repayment on the water projects.
So you have thirty-five million, so thirty-five thousand times seventeen cents, right?
Thirty-five million.
Thirty-five million.
You said you, you, we bill by the thousand, not the millions.
Yeah, but we sold thirty-five million.
Thirty-five thousand times seventeen cents.
Where'd you get thirty-five thousand from?
Cause a thousand times thirty-five thousand is a million. And if you're only being billed by the thousand gallons, or you being billed by the gallon.
Now you get billed by a thousand.
So, so it's your thirty-five thousand times seventeen cents, so it's not quite seventy thousand dollars. Right? If we get water fees.
Yeah.
Lost you on.
What do we get the water fee for here?
Well, I don't know if you can actually figure that though, because everybody pays a seventeen forty-five. You paid.
You're paying seventy, you're talking dollars, not cents.
Seventeen dollars and forty-five cents.
Yeah, for the first three thousand gallons.
Three thousand and then.
Anything over three thousand is five fifty-four or whatever.
Five, are we talking dollars or cents?
Five dollars and fifty-four cents.
For a thousand.
For a thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
But see, I don't know how much of that is actually, I mean, uh, you just, however many meters you got.
That would be difficult to figure because some people have their meter turned on and they still pay the seventeen forty-five and they don't even use anyone.
Everybody pays on a meter.
That's your base rate.
Yeah.
You get up to three thousand.
How many did you say, Jeff?
About seven twenty, give or take a little.
That's just if you have a water meter, right, Jeff? That, like, what if someone has an electric meter and a lawn, but no water meter? At least you'll get charged.
They don't get billed for water.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah.
So just off of the meters alone, just the bare minimum, every month you're taking in twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars?
That's for the base?
That's just the base.
Right.
Hundred and fifty thousand a year just off base.
And in the event that you were to look for any kind of loan or assistance or help with repairs or anything like that, the rates are gonna be, at least need to be up in the.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars.
And we're at seventeen fifty?
Yes. That's what we learned when we went to the.
Right, right. And we're not ever gonna have enough revenue to pay for the kind of thing that we're gonna have.
The thing is, off of base, if you figure every house in this town, or every meter uses exactly three thousand gallons every month and nothing more, it's two point one million gallons.
Right.
So we've got thirty-three million gallons going somewhere else. So maybe that figure of the parks is not out of the ballpark.
Right. Cause what were we totaled at?
Twenty-five million gallons, wasn't it? Or five million?
For?
The parks.
Park.
What was the total on parks?
About twelve, I think.
Eleven and twelve. Cause we had six here and three at the other.
That's right.
True.
I don't like us, we use probably six thousand gallons.
Ah, yeah, I, I mean, that's, but you know, I don't, I, I don't know.
There's probably not over twenty-five percent of the bills that go out that, that hit the three thousand. Most, seventy-five percent of them are probably over there.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
You know, we have something that uses ninety thousand. I mean, you know. We have something that uses the water on city water. It's eighty-five or ninety thousand.
The parks are all metered, Jim?
Yes. Everything we have is metered.
So.
I think so.
Just food for thought.
What was that figure? Did you, came out of that figure? Where'd you get that figure from?
As far as the, if you're needing assistance, but you're gonna have to, for what?
For sales.
A sale?
No, what, you mentioned something about what base rate everybody else charges. Is that what you said earlier?
Well, what we said was in order to, in order to get state and federal money, your base rate has to be in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollar range so that you have the capability of paying back.
Right, cause they're gonna say if you're not willing.
That's required, that's required by the state.
If you're not willing to help yourself, then we're not gonna help you.
For the grants, for the grants and stuff that are on, it's, it's about twenty-eight dollars and something for water, twenty-six or twenty-seven for sewer.
Well, and it's, the, the biggest thing, the smaller towns that have had some of the issues like we have had, and talking to a few people, they said, those towns are in the same process because they have the low rates. These rates people wanna say are high, they're not. It's, they, they turn around and go, we've been in the same boat, they come in and they says, you have to raise these rates before you can have any kind of assistance.
Yeah, you won't be, Pretty Prairie's a good example.
It should have been stairs that year.
And half for the last couple of years in order to get state funding for a water tower and reverse osmosis plant because they need to do treatment too, but their rates have been so low that they just, they couldn't do it. Can't get any financing at all. And it's long-term financing to pay them back, but, but you have to meet that threshold.
I don't know when, five years ago or whenever they put in the treatment facility, that it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't that big of a deal as far as our rates.
It was a, it was a different, it was a different kind of a, uh, that was a revolving state loan that we took for the nitrate plant. It's different than the grant monies and that stuff. This is through, this is through KDHE, the one that we have.
The one that we have now?
Yes.
Right, and.
This deal, this other deal's a whole different deal. It was a, what was the name of that deal we went to, Jamie?
But that's, that's for grants.
Yes.
If you wanna get a grant.
Yes, yes. And you have to be, you have to be capable of paying back at least twenty-five percent of it.
Which the point that was made as far as the KDHE where we went through that process for this plan, money's not gonna be there. There's no money there. There's not gonna be money there.
Well, what the point was made. Three point two million dollars on something that's not even paid for and just jumped.
But what they're, what they're saying is, is that essentially if you were to have to go and do another project or have a problem like the current problem we're seeing, at some point, whatever your solution is, if you have to come up with a bunch of money, KDHE ain't gonna be there to help you and you're gonna have to go through a different process in which those processes require the people of the town, the city itself, helping itself. And if they say you're at seventeen fifty, you need to be at twenty-five, we're not helping you because you're not doing it.
And the other part, the other part of the deal is that when you go for those, that fifty-one percent of your, of your constituents or people that live in the targeted area that you're gonna do, whether it's the whole town or it's a quarter of the town, have to meet a certain income level. Have to be below a certain income level in order to qualify for it. But that state money is a twenty and thirty-year loan money, but back to what you said, Marshall, that's, I feel just like you do a lot of days, but uh, the plant still has some value. And, and there are, and it, and it has parts of it that are very valuable out on the open market. So, uh, if we ever get to the bottom of where we're headed now, there's a good possibility that we can find a home for them vessels at a fairly large sum of money, we hope. You know, that's what I wanted to talk about here, and I don't wanna talk very long.
Sure.
Uh, but, you know, the mayor and I and Ned spent about an hour yesterday discussing, you know, where we're at, where we need to head, uh, the problems we're having, ways to correct them. We hashed over a lot of stuff, I thought, really, in a short time.
Sure.
Uh, but where we're at right now, we want to bring to you the next meeting a kind of a round figure of what it's gonna take to evaluate what we have.
Just to get an evaluation.
All the way from the wells to the treatment facility, to the samples out of vessels, to uh check and test wells to see where the water's at, bacterial levels, iron oxide, that stuff. So that we can get some kind of a game plan to bring back to you of whether the city needs to drill another well, where they need to go to drill it, uh, what kinda options we have, or if we raise the rates enough that people quit using so much that we don't have to do anything. There's a lo- there's a lot, there's a lot of cards there, you know? So, uh, that's really all we know right now. But I think when Ned comes back in two weeks, we'll have some kind of an idea of how far we wanna stretch this, how far you're willing to stretch it, what you wanna look at, where we wanna end up.
So. What's Ned coming back in two weeks for?
Uh, we wanna give you a cost on what it costs to test those vessels and that stuff to see what the contaminant is, whether, whether the vessels can be flushed or whether the beads are gonna have to be changed in them. Because right now the contamination that's in them, we're not getting the regeneration on those. And I think we've explained it once or twice before that where we used to regen at three hundred thousand, now we're down to two hundred and fifty, we're not getting the vessels cleaned and back online the way that they should be, so uh, whether it's all caused by one well or two wells or all wells, uh, the contamination or whatever it is, the vegetation that's in that, whether, whether we're seven or eight out the plant that we've got there, you know, just a cost to tell you what it's gonna cost to do all that.
Right.
And, and then, and then some ideas about where maybe we oughta head after that.
An action plan of what's, what it's, what is it gonna cost to assess it?
A long, a long-term, a long-term plan to kinda see where we wanna go.
Sure.
So.
Whether it's drill a new well or, oh, we can drill a new well and bypass.
The state, the state has some options too, that if we, if we would choose to go outside, if we, if we go towards the Rattlesnake Creek, we have to give up part of our water rights to the state. If we go this way, we don't. We can pull the water rights from a well here in town, transfer them out to another well, whether we go three or four miles out or whether we can do it next to a well we have where it's, it's tested and it's healthy to use or what we do.
And still use the old well for water in the park?
Yeah, you know, we have to take off what you're gonna use to water the park. You take that off of what the well's been rated at by the state for you to pop out of it. But still, it, it allows you to take that higher nitrated water to put on your private facilities without having to go through a treatment plant, so...
Why spend money to water the park?
Just some options, you know?
Treat your water?
But I, I think we'll have a little better idea in a couple of weeks of, of things that we can throw on the table to you.
Actually being able to sit down with Ned and kind of hear the same presentation that we had the last meeting in a non-meeting format where it wasn't just a crap ton of information, if you will, just thrown at you, it's a lot to digest. A lot of what he was talking about made some sense, but he was talking about potential options of what we could do. And he said, "You just need to find a starting point to really see what the root cause is and where a potential fix could come from based on what, what the cause is." Because we don't know one hundred percent what the exact cause is.
I don't think it's really a case of hip and when, I think it's a case of when and how.
Right. Right.
It's gonna have to happen, but when?
It's not a, not an amount of how... It's not an amount of, are we gonna spend, it's how much are you willing to spend? Because you're gonna spend.
That's basically it.
Right.
So...
It's an issue that's not going away, there's gonna be some money spent.
But we, but we know too, I know as well as you guys do, because I pay it too, that we don't wanna throw out something that we can't swallow. But by the same token, by state requirements, we have to provide good, clean, healthy water.
And it's our obligation as a city that we provide?
It's the rules.
Right. Look at our, look at our permit.
It's the rules.
Look at our certificate.
Anyway, that's really all I have is just, you know, we wanna sit down, bring some things to you next meeting that...
Would you bring those in printed form?
Yes, I will. I'd be glad to, be glad to. So, you know, we've talked about a lot of things. I think we have a lot of options. And the farther we get away from the edge of this and going this way, the better the water gets. It's, it's pretty cut and dry.
And essentially, if you go out there, you can cut the, the nitrate treatment part out of that plant.
And that's what we're thinking. We're thinking in the long run that if this works, then we can leave it as a blending plant, which is what we do now. And, and the treatment vessels would be gone.
Does that mean that you start putting chlorine back in at the wellheads?
No, no, we'll still do it the way we do it.
Let's see, that don't solve any of the problems?
Can you see you're making money?
No, no, the vessels are for the nitrates only. That's all they're for. We do not treat that water with chlorine until just before it comes in this town. Everything's raw inside the plant.
The problem is, is you're still gonna have all the, all the other stuff, of course, it's not going through the vessels. That's the only difference.
Yes.
The iron oxide, the...
Well, when that well goes, that iron oxide will come way down. We're pretty sure. Now, I'm not gonna say it won't still be there, but there are different ways to treat that than there are by running it through the vessels, so...
Can't you treat the iron oxide out of the well?
Yes, you can.
The iron forming back?
And we could go to chlorinating at the wells at that point too, if we need to.
Well, I just know, I just know prior to it, we never had issues like this.
Oh, no, no.
Prior to that plant, there were never iron oxide issues?
Oh, I think there always were, but I don't think they ever showed up like that because we didn't have that problem, you know?
Right, because you were treating it coming right out of the wellhead.
The type, but the type of equipment that we use now to run this, the iron oxide's really hard on, without a doubt.
And it's gonna cost us money.
Yeah. I mean, we use some things now that we've never used before at all. But, you know, then you, then you would have the option of chlorinating the wells back there. The blending part of it is a unique part to me because you can still use the wells if you have, like that number six well over west, it really has the highest nitrates of any of them.
And you can blend, yeah.
And you can blend it with, with lower, almost no nitrate water.
And come out under...
Skater right on through, keep out under tent hearts, so...
Yep, it, it might be a good idea maybe to see what, what those vessels are, what our value there could potentially be.
I think an engineer could probably tell us because they're still, they're still prescribing them in a lot of places.
It might be a good idea next time you're talking to somebody.
It's not like we've really heard them talk about it, I mean, as far as that goes, but I could call a couple of guys in Manhattan, probably give a good round of numbers.
Sure. Anything else from Jeff? Is this, you're talking about the water, West Street, Fifth Street, any new business?
What is that? I don't know. I don't know why it's on there.
Oh, is it any business?
I think, I think several of us got calls because of the condition of West Street.
It's on this year's agenda to be repaired.
Okay. I talked to Phil Nesser, and he told me they'd be willing to do it if we did the legwork and located everything.
Are you talking about the asphalt part of the street or the dirt part of the street?
Dirt part of the street.
He was supposed to do it last winter and they never got to it. That, we'd already made a deal with them to do it last winter and they never got to it.
Because...
They've got the equipment.
They've got the equipment to do it.
Yeah, and he told us he would, but they never got to it.
What are they gonna do?
They were gonna rip that, we were gonna try and work that up and get some rock down into it and get a base where we'd be able to drain that water off and, and take care of the road and give the road some base where it's all sand now, and they were gonna do it last winter. They were gonna rip it and do that, but they never got it done.
I think you need to dig a ditch on both sides.
On southwest, you can't.
Why?
Because you can't drain the east side of it. There's no place for, there's no place for, no, can't go past the railroad tracks.
Well, good to the railroad right away.
It'll lay down at my farm. It needs to go north into a catch basin. There's catch basins on the north.
But you're running water uphill. Water doesn't...
No, we're not. Not going, not going to the north. We're not running uphill. We drained it that way for years in the west ditch. We sloped that road about ten degrees to the west, we drained it in a ditch to the west and took it north. Every bit of it except for a very little bit on the right away.
Well, regardless, I'd like to see some, you know, I guess I didn't realize that the county was supposed to be getting on that and you've got an agreement.
Yes.
It's a pretty heavily traveled road, and I think if that road is not traveled, if it gets bad enough, then they're gonna start coming through town, you know, semis that are, you know, trying to get through town.
And we grade it as often as we can, but this time of year, it's kinda hard to get them to help us. I mean, we're kinda all in a bad spot in the road for now.
I understand, I understand.
I mean, we, we've graded it in the last few days. You know, you get on it when it rains, it's either wet or it's dry.
With a sixty-foot right away, why can you not rip, put a ditch on both sides?
Well, you can, but what, you're gonna put culverts in every street.
No.
And where you're gonna, and if you drain it to the south, it's still gonna end up on the railroad runway. You can't drain it to the south, it has no place to go. Then you have a mosquito patch, it has to go to the north.
And where do we get rid of it in the north?
Catch basins at West Street first.
Into the storm sewer?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, they're there. There's two sets of them, in the first block.
One at the south end and they go up on both sides.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we drained it that way forever. We drained it to the west side and drained it north. I've been down on that dirt road about thirty-five years and I've graded it a lot of times. And we drained it, and we just, because the streets are flat coming off of there, and the smart approach is to take it across the road and let it go north. If not, you're gonna put a covert at every intersection, and they're gonna be very shallow because you don't have that much draw. It has to drain into an open ditch. Marshall and I have talked about this too. About going so far as to either even putting some kind of a pool back there to let it settle into and then coming back. But we don't wanna be responsible for a mosquito haven and having to mow it and that stuff too, I mean.
And, and south?
And on the west side, you don't have any culverts to put in except for two.
Cornwall, Cornwall's gotta have any.
Cornwall's and, and Richard Lawson, and that's it.
But you're gonna have to build it up some way.
Somehow, yeah.
And south of the railroad track?
South of the railroad track, I don't know. We got about two hundred feet of dirt. And it's a very steep slope. Very steep slope, because you're coming up the backside of those tracks. Maybe asphalt's the answer on the south side, I don't know. I don't know. I wish they did.
Yeah, 'cause it's flat and besidly to me like it'll even go on the railroad right away.
On the south side? It, yeah, I mean, but, but the slope coming up is what makes it so hard to grade. So, and there's no place for it to go. I mean, that's basically all county stuff. They maintain all the ditch and stuff there, so...
Could we, could we take the water south, from the railroad south?
Probably. Probably.
Is that something you can get in contact with Phil and just get a, get a time, just rewind above it?
Yeah.
Get your heads together?
But till their roadworks done, he's not even gonna listen. Which will be September, October.
I understand, but I just know that we're still concerned about it and we need, you know, needs...
And, and we've talked, we've talked about it too, and, and he knows that, that, you know, with their building and stuff last winter, that they just never got, they never got the opportunity to do it. But I'll discuss it with him again. But we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to rip it and build it somehow. So...
I just try to grade as much as you can.
Yeah.
I, I know it doesn't last very long unless it dry out.
But it still has, there's so much sand on it, it's just so choppy, you know?
Having a scareifier?
We don't, we do, but I don't think our machine will rip that road. Not as hard as it is, I don't think we can rip it. Our machine's not big enough to rip it. But if somebody put a four hundred, four hundred horse tractor and a ripper, we could rip it.
County having a scareifier that they can...
They do on their machines.
Do on their big machine. Okay, and the other issue...
And we really don't have anything in that street to hurt, but we can't rip it, so...
Yeah, I think the other issue is Fifth Street, which looks to me like it has, as near as I can tell, about an eighteen inch drop and, and a half a mile. And obstructed by culverts and lack of culverts and driveways on both sides. Can it be pulled up and we get county to help pull it up and grab it?
Sewer manholes, there's the problem. Manholes above the street, all the way through there. Without building that street up a bunch, we can't grade it, the manholes are too high. We have them marked with posts in the street because we catch them every time we grade. There's just nothing there, you know, but...
And what's to the side of the ditches?
The south side, we have foam cable in the ditch all the way through there.
How deep?
It's, it's very, it's pretty shallow. We need to pull the covert at Hamples again. But I, I suggested to the guys when we pull it the next time that we, I don't know whether we take iron pilings, bridge pilings out there or what we do, but we plant them at the ends of that driveway where the culverts don't get mashed anymore because it makes no difference how wide we make it. Somebody tears it up and I mash it shut, it doesn't drain. Now, we did get one deal this week. We took one covert out.
I saw that.
And, and we would like to grade it again, but until they're done out there at the grocery store. Every time it rains, the way they've got that dirt cut out there, all that water is draining into an area where we ran our water service in, and it pushed it out and it made that hole the width of a backhoe bucket and out in the road about this far mush.
What's wrong, what's wrong with keeping the road closed for right now?
Well, we can. It's unhandy for everybody, but I mean, we could close it. We have barricades out there. We, we graded it the other day, we pulled that covert out, and we barricaded around where that is 'cause I'm afraid we're just gonna have to dig it back out. But until they get concrete or asphalt in that driveway and stop that water, it's gonna be a slop hole is what it's gonna be. And back up to the west, we have no place to get rid of the water.
Yeah.
I mean, we drain it into the VFW parking lot, it's just as flat as the road is. And you're right, there's probably not, I'd say a maximum of two foot from Santa Fe, from Santa Fe going clear out to the island.
Be lucky if you get an inch per hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, and we've pulled some culverts out there over the years, pulled one out of burning lights. You know, it's not in there anymore, but still, there's just, there's no place to take it. Ground's too flat.
Yeah, it's hard to move water an inch per hundred feet and you can't make it go uphill.
No. No.
With the issue on Fifth Street, I'm sure all, if not most of you are aware of Darrell Willinkar hitting that pothole. I have been in contact with him and I contacted our insurance. I gave him the form. If he wants to file that claim, he can, or will turn it in and insurance will then investigate. And link it up to them, so...
That street's not a truck route. What's he doing on it?
Coming out of Hamples for fuel.
Maybe we could give him a ticket for being on a street that's not a truck route, tearing up the street?
All them guys coming in and out of Hamples for fuel, they're gonna wanna use it. And that's another reason we can't maintain, it's chewed up all the time. Between tank trucks, semis, everybody else.
It used to be they could go in there and turn around, around a building and go back up the...
We would have prayed for asphalt. You have no idea how much we would like to have had asphalt out there because it would have solved every one of our problems, but, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, the manholes are up above road level. There's no dirt out there to pull. You could shoot a markle down the whole deal for almost a half a mile 'cause it's just flat.
So just again, as far as the pulling grid issue went, Jamie's let them know what their process is, if they'd like to pursue that route, that's what they need to do. We have a process for it, so if you hear anything or need to direct them, Jamie, once again, because there is that process.
And with rock, would you have to haul or bring it up above your mantle?
Potentially. I mean, that's, there's nothing we can say, no, you can't file a claim, right?
No, I mean, the insurance company will come out and, and investigate it and...
Either covered or...
A city issue or not.
Sure.
But once with the city was, just to let you guys know, once the city was made aware of the, the issue, the street was closed, so...
And I will tell you though, on the Friday previous to that, that we had graded that road. And that road was smooth, but then there were two inches of rain over the weekend and it hit in that hole.
Hit the hole, mushed, just turned road mush.
And we were the last ones to hear about it happening. I mean, we didn't really find out till Monday morning. So, and as soon as we did, we went out there and took care of it. We spent most of the day in fact out there by trying to straighten it out, so...
Leave it how it is? Do you want Jeff to close the road?
We've got, we've got the whole barricade.
The whole, the whole itself is barricaded.
The whole is barricaded with a flashing light on it. Now, the rest of the road is drug where they can get back out there. We were gonna leave it closed, and I told the guys, I said, "No, let's try and get it open. There's too many guys coming in out here."
My only thing is, is if it rains Jeff, I say you go out and shut it down.
I think we do, yeah.
I mean, if we get an inch of rain, I say you go out and just close it down.
Because we don't want this to happen.
And if you wanna shut it down on a problem with the rain before?
Right, I mean...
Because...
Well, the thing is, we got an on-call person that can run out.
I guess I'm glad the fence was up there on the south side, or they might have been in the middle of that north right away. You know? So, I, I will tell you, there was room between where the end of that hole was and the south edge of the road. Had plenty of room to drive in between there anyway. So...
I'd just say that if, if it rains...
Close up the road.
Close it down?
Yep, we will. We sure will.
To avoid any problems.
Yep.
Anything else on that issue?
We will.
Okay, anything else from Jeff? We heard from what John had. Anything else from John? Anything for John?
Nope.
Okay.
I might make one comment for you fast. If, when the time comes and that, and that is done, we are going to have that all located from there clear back to Santa Fe. And we're gonna try and find out if we can pull that ditch out to where we can slope that a little bit because we've had problems at Danny's off and on for a long time. And people driving in his yard and people driving on this side. So just to let you know, as soon as this is taken care of, we're gonna do that whole deal. We're gonna shoot it to make it drain, especially now that we know we're not gonna get asphalt. We're gonna try something. We're not gonna leave it the way it is. It's a mess. It's a mess. Just like Southwestern, it's a mess, so...
One more thing Jeff. Are you gonna bring a report to us on like, you went to Midwest Energy in Hayes one day about rates on...
Greg will probably come out and do that. We, we may, I imagine if I was guessing right, I'm gonna say we're gonna meet one more time before that comes up. Rates are done, I think in January. I think probably, they're tossing around some things that they're wanting to throw out that, that the cities, the cities that meet up there would be like us, Colby, La Crosse, Larded. There's about eight or nine of us that meet with them that I think there's some options that we're gonna try and, and look at one more time before I have Greg come down and explain them to you.
Sounds good, just curious.
Yeah, yeah. And I think there's some great options. I think we might even see our wholesale electricity go down just a little bit, so... Because of the options, and this, and it sounds funny to you, and I'll tell you why. Because with all the base wind energy, they're calling, they're calling wind and solar base energy now. These guys are backing off from it and they're trying to get rid of their other stuff too, so. If it doesn't go down, it probably won't raise, which would be a good thing, so.
Moving on, Mayor, report. Nothing more than what we talked to you about Ned about. Old business with the handbook?
Basically on that, the committee met yesterday. I made all of my final touches when I have these minutes
Attached.
Attached, but they're not gonna be approved. So we'll figure that out. I'm gonna send it to John on Thursday, and once he is done with it, I will send out a digital copy to everyone. If you would like a paper copy, you can come in here and we can get you a paper copy, but it's gonna be quite extensive. So I'm just gonna send out the digital copy at first.
Hopefully John will be able to make his changes by next meeting, and we could make a vote to pass the handbook is what we're trying to go for. If everyone's okay with what's in the handbook. So that's just the tentative schedule for that because he wants to make it, code the etiquette, make sure everything's straight.
I would just make the suggestion that as soon as he gets it done and finalized, get it out to all of us so we can read through the whole thing instead of maybe?
Sure, right.
Yeah.
I mean, just even the Friday before is not probably?
No. As soon as he gets it done, I will be emailing it to you, and if you would like a copy, come in and talk to me.
I would push pretty hard to make sure we, we do that, get that done.
He usually works on our stuff on Sundays, so maybe you can get to it this Sunday.
All right. No other old business. Move on to new business. We took care of West Street, Fifth Street, water. Took care of the water as well. No other business. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Close, Gary Scora. Meeting's adjourned at eight twelve.